Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have called today's committee in the whole meeting to order for twenty second council, are there any changes to the agenda? So non administration, any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes, we can remove item five point two, uh, twenty twenty one A T annual report from the agenda, please.
Any other changes? Any other changes for administration?
No.
Counsel, any proposition to removing five point two? Counsel? Counselor Taylor?
I'd love to ask.
Everyone have questions about the agenda, counsel?
Yeah, um, I see eight point two, I'm not quite sure exactly what that is. Are we going to talk about the C E O recruitment type? Is that what that's about?
I'm not sure, administration?
The new C E O recruitment, because we should be. That's not what, that's not what that is, that's what we should.
I believe that's what it is.
As far as I know, it's about the C E O recruitment committee, committee. Let's get doing a meeting, discussions on what to move forward.
Oh, perfect, thank you very much, I just wasn't sure what it was.
Michaels?
Thank you, Mr. Charlie, to move to approve the agenda for March twenty second as amended.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels, any discussion on that? So none, all those in favor? That's carried unanimously. So that brings us to citizens minute with councils, you know, and in the room, is there anyone who could speak by Zoom? No one, no citizens met with council by Zoom today, so that brings us to delegations and presentations. And our first delegation day is addition of Trails Committee M B two, three, eight, one. And I believe that is being presented by Councilor Ross.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, thank you, counsel, um, I know this is, I brought it up at the organizational meeting. Um, and, and due to timing, you know, and it's not pressing, like, I brought it up because, you know, I, I heard a lot from the community during the election that our trails mean a lot to our community, and I've seen other surrounding communities putting a lot of effort into, um, into the trail system. So did a little research on, um, looking at our master plan, our parts and, um, trail or parks and, sorry, let me just, uh, using that term, parks and open space and trails master plan. And, um, you know, when we look at our, our community, we have a hundred ten kilometers of trails. Twelve kilometers of those are paved, twenty six kilometers of gravel, fifty five kilometers are natural trails and three kilometers of boardwalk. Uh, fourteen kilometers of bike trails. Now, I realize that, you know, our bike trails are covered a lot by Hema. And I was looking after that, um, of course, our boardwalk is now with our Oversight Committee, cause it's looking at that. Um, but we have a lot of other kilometers of trails as well. And so a lot of the post, um, master plan focused on a lot on, um, uh, on walking and bike trails, uh, it's top, top five amenities that people would like to see improved. And trails and pathways were one of those, uh, along with our boardwalks, which are being addressed. Playgrounds we're working on, I talked about off leash dog areas and, and the first picking areas, the trails and pathways were part of that. Accessibility and connectivity was a big part of, of the post. You know, access, usage, connectivity for all residents and visitors to Hinton as well, which I believe that at the time there was a, a significant gap uh, in connectivity in certain areas of our community, uh, specifically, I think a lot from, from valley to hill area as well. So, you know, and, and I look at there's trails being worked on outside of our community with the, the look at the path towards, uh, Holy Mountain uh, to the gates there. And so I thought maybe it would be an opportunity for council to get involved. Uh, I'm not sure what the committee would look like, I just wanted to have an initial conversation about it. But I think if we're going to have anomalies like this, you know, and I, and, and with all respect to administration, they have a lot on their plate, uh, with a lot of other things. So if, if council, you know, wants to move this forward and look at our trail system, then maybe getting involved. Now, whether that's a committee, uh, in the short term, uh, you know, working group of some sort to kind of explore that. There was a lot of, uh, talk in the post about, uh, grant funding and, and there was a lot of, you know, delivery recommendations, summary recommendations, there was mid, short, long, ongoing. Uh, so I don't know if this is an opportunity for a committee to kind of look at that and, and maybe look at, you know, going into the twenty twenty three budget year, uh, possible recommendations potentially from that community. So, so I'm going to leave it at that and, and see what the rest of council thinks. Uh, I think there were some other, you know, counselors and, and mayor that may have heard similar things or have some ideas on it. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for up to me.
Thank you, Councilor Ross.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I certainly agree. I think there's a, a lot of potential, especially when you consider some of the, um, citizen-led activities in the region too. Uh, and again, primarily, and you had mentioned it, you know, uh, areas like Hema. Uh, we also have our, you know, path to the park, uh, organized and, and understanding that, yes, you know, strict, strictly speaking, that's not necessarily entirely within town. There's definitely, you know, engagement and, and some, some ownership in that area, I think. So it's something to consider and see if there's the desire from citizens in town and, you know, uh, at least looking into it, certainly doesn't hurt anything.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilman McGee. And I realize that, you know, with the addition of a committee means extra time for, you know, for counselors and stuff and everything. And I mean, that's definitely something to consider, you know, is it, you know, reasonable at this time? But, you know, I think it's just something, you know, when we look at the connectivity and also the, you know, the, the, the recreation purposes as well. The post identified that some of these areas are for walking only, but the opportunities that might be to add additional things. And I know that there was some discussion when the Maxwell Lake area come up that, you know, having, um, outdoor exercise potential equipment, uh, available for all ages in those areas to something to attract other than just walking or biking, but, you know, to get outdoors and, and the fact that we, you know, have such a great outdoor space. This is an opportunity to kind of enhance those areas. So that's, you know, again, from our own master plan, uh, so I just thought this might be an opportunity to enhance some of that, take from the master plan and maybe move some of it forward, so.
Thank you, Councilor Ross, Councilor Taylor?
Not against the idea, I'm just, uh, questioning the timing of it. We're just so committed to the Beaver Boardwalk, the one, the one, well, two things we're committed to, actually committed to the, uh, path to the park. And we're committed in a big way to the Beaver Boardwalk. We've been working for how long? Since two thousand sixteen to solve the Beaver Boardwalk problem. I'd suggest that we solve that first, get that in good shape, and then we can take on other, uh, trail responsibilities or ideas. That's, that's my suggestion, is not to take too much on in the way of trails. We've got a big one, we're right in the middle of.
Councilor Ross, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, i- if I may, and, and I hear what you're saying, definitely, and, and the great work is being done in there. I think there's some areas though, and, and one of the biggest things that I think that came up with some of the dish, the thought of the Trail Committee. Uh, and I've had the opportunity and I've watched the Beaver Boardwalk Oversight Committee videos as they come out. And one of the things that's come up in, in citizens is the, the signage of that area and the concern that, you know, some of the trails are not signed very well, that people are actually getting lost. We've had some citizens, um, find, uh, tourists out there that were extremely turned around. And I think, you know, I agree with you, but I think that if, if, if that's, if the committee is not the, the solution, then maybe it not, may not be, but if we as council could have a conversation with our administration to look at, you know, the signage of that area and, and if it's, you know, budgetary or if it's timing or whatever, but I just, I think for safety purposes too, that area, the trails is just something to consider as well. And it may not be a solution for a committee, it just may be a solution within administration and direction for council, so. But I agree, you know, there is a lot going on in that area, you're right, thank you.
Did you, is that a follow-up direct to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mix up the Beaver Boardwalk Committee and their area responsibility with another committee, I'd keep those things separate. Maybe, and when you get the Beaver Boardwalk area up to a certain standard, then maybe let's broaden the scope of the Beaver Boardwalk Committee, cancel it, or get another committee that covers a broader area of trails, that'll be my suggestion.
And if I will, and I, I don't, yeah, I agree, I just, it came up, I know, in the Beaver's Boardwalk Oversight Committee in one of their meetings, and that was one of the questions is, how, you know, is it, is it within the Beaver Boardwalk Committees, Oversight Committees, their ability to make those recommendations, does it fall out? That, that was a conversation that came up, and if it's not in the Beaver Boardwalk Committee, Oversight Committee, which it could be, might not be, then we need to look at possibly then looking at, uh, outside of the Beaver Boardwalk, maybe for that issue a little bit, so. Thank you.
I have Mayor Michaels and then Counselor Reese and then Counselor LeBarre.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I, I like this idea. I, I think the timing is more relevant to our strategic plan, not the Beaver Boardwalk at all. If we use that logic, let's not work on the water treatment plant, because the Beaver Boardwalk hasn't been resolved. If it's a priority of council through the strap plan, uh, to focus on trails, then it should be completely, uh, separate from the Beaver Boardwalk, because, uh, many people that I spoke to, uh, four or five months ago, that they want connectivity from Parks West Mall to Mary River. Uh, it has nothing to do with the Beaver Boardwalk. So if it's a priority, uh, after April twenty third in meeting, uh, as a council through a strap plan, then I think we revisit this in June and give that direction to form a committee, because I believe we only have two options when that kind of time comes, which is, um, through the strategic plan, uh, allow administration to simply, uh, incorporate that into our five-year plan. And then that comes to council for us to decide. But I do prefer, uh, having potentially community members with council and administration sitting down uh, at the table and looking on what does, if it's the will of council through a strap plan, what does a, a trail network within the town of Hinton look like? And I think, uh, all three voices are important. So in June or end of May, June, I would support the formation of, uh, a committee uh, that just brings recommendations on what that looks like if, again, on April twenty third, uh, we, we establish that it's a priority, uh, and we have to learn to, to just balance priorities together. Whether it's Beaver Boardwalk, Water Treatment Plan, Rec Center, anything, uh, we have to run stuff concurrently, right? So to me, trails are important, uh, in and itself, and people in Hinton want, uh, that connectivity, because we have awesome trails. They're just not complete yet from, uh, east to west. So, uh, for that, uh, I don't know what the direction looks like, but I would want to revisit this after we meet, uh, in, uh, end of April. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mayor Michaels, Counselor Ross?
Actually, we'll go with the other councils first, and then we'll come back to me, thank you, Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you know, I want to thank Counselor Ross for bringing this up. You're probably going to mention this sooner. But, uh, the C S P, this really does fall into theme five, which is natural and built environments. So, you know, by doing this, we would, you know, working with our C S P, which we visit, you know, three to four times a month in our agendas, so I would.
Thank you, Counselor Reese, Counselor LeBarre.
Um, yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I think it's a great idea. I think part of what happened with the Beaver Boardwalk is we forgot to coordinate it, and I think a bunch of things. It was left to sort of fall apart without there being any oversight or coordinated plan. And I think, I guess, as I take a look at this committee, it's how do we link these things together? How does Beaver Boardwalk work with, uh, I mean, hundred kilometers of trails, four of them are the Beaver Boardwalk. So, I mean, it would seem to me that there's lots of things to do. And it's not only the hundred kilometers trail that needs to be dealt with in some ways, but where do we go to next? Comment to, you know, the mayor had to say is, I think, planning this thing, given the magnitude of what's there, just makes sense. I don't think it's going to take a lot of time, I don't think it's going to take a lot of money. Yeah, and I think to have a good, uh, focused look at the trail system just makes sense. But I think we should do it after strategic work.
Thank you, Counselor LeBarre, Counselor McGee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, and the one other thing that I saw, uh, future potential on is that with our trails, um, you know, we've talked a lot about walking and, and cycling and, and those sorts of natural and personal forms of locomotion. The one area that I think in the long run, while still being sensitive to Counselor Taylor's point of not overdoing it in any one area. But in really trying to focus on the benefits that we have with tourism, because we're outside of the park and we're not bound by the same regulations of the park. Uh, is again, I, I come back to, um, the benefits, uh, from tourism and local business in areas like northwestern Ontario, northern Minnesota, northern Wisconsin, where they capitalize on trail systems for things like, uh, in the winter, uh, snowmobiles in the summer quads. Um, and what they do is they bring in large amounts of tourism, uh, by having interconnected trail networks for, uh, those sorts of off-road sports. Uh, and it benefits the local hospitality and tourism industries greatly. Because people are able to go from hotels to restaurants to the bush, um, through interconnected trailways. And these communities become known as trail destinations, because they can get outside and back in. Uh, and it is hugely important for local business. So a- again, without overdoing it in the short term, uh, it's something to consider that I think in the long term could be considered by the sort of committee, uh, committee, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counselor Ross?
Yeah, and, and I think that's something else that actually never really crossed my mind until now, but I think it's on top of everybody's mind. And the connectivity is, is, I think, you know, part of, you know, a big part of why I brought this forward, but also economically, you know, um, I, I see a lot of people starting to get on the trails more on the bikes and everything, just financially, the price of gas and everything, and, and the safety that that would also then bring, because we, as it is right now, there is very little connection to Parks West Mall or, you know, it's going down the city streets or in some areas, don't even have sidewalks in those areas. So I think, you know, looking at that and, and finding alternatives, so we're not, you know, jumping in our car every time and maybe getting out there with the introduction of the e-bikes and see more and more e-bikes out there. You know, both summer and winter, you know, that it just increases the opportunity for that as well. So, uh, so I, I appreciate everyone's, uh, definitely their input and I appreciate the support to the area as well, so, thank you.
Counselor Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I guess our question is, do we postpone this to a future committee of the whole, uh, in the month of June? Uh, after we have our strap plan, we kind of figure out, eh, you know, if it falls within one of our priorities. And I think we revisit this conversation, then direct administration at that time, if that is the will, uh, to bring forth terms of reference or, uh, you know, something of that. So I, I, I don't want this to be lost, so, uh, I'm suggesting, I think, maybe just postponing this to, uh, a meeting of committee of the whole to the end of June, uh, unless there's any other suggestions from council, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's totally reasonable with strap la- the plan right around the corner. Um, you know, and, and I'm sure now, you know, with this conversation, that it, it'd be part of our conversation. I know I did my, my doodle poll or whatever it is, survey and trails and natural resources and all those things and tourism is part of it, so I'm guessing, you know, so I'd be totally in favor of a way move to postpone this conversation to committee hall to the, you know, to the end of June, uh, and after a strap plan, that would be a reasonable, so it'd be in favor of that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ross, Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll move to postpone, uh, this item to a future committee of the whole meeting, uh, prior to the end of June twenty twenty two.
Okay, council, we have a proposed direction, any comments, questions, proposed direction? Counselor LeBarre?
Just from a wording perspective, so we can track this, rather than saying this item, we might want to say the Beaver Boardwalk Committee consideration.
Oh, sorry, the trail, the trail committee, yes.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you, Counselor LeBarre.
Counselor, anything further? No one, no call to question? Uh, the committee moved postpone the addition of Trails Committee M B two, three, one to a future committee of the whole meeting prior to June twenty twenty two, all those in favor? That was carried unanimously, thank you. Counselor, anything further on the addition of Trails Committee delegation before we move forward? With that, we will move on to four point two, infrastructure planning, decision-making and accountability. This is presented by Counselor Stuart Taylor. Well, Counselor Taylor, when you brought this forward, you asked that this be a closed session item? And I think that is likely applicable unless administration has a reason why it wouldn't be. So if you wanted to move into closed session to this discussion, that's fine.
Yeah, I move that we, uh, move into a closed session for this, uh, topic with the, with the town manager only.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All those in favor? I just want to move into closed session.
Okay.
Oh.
Off the mic.
So we got a few minutes here.
So what they were doing is they were building a pool for a B and B, and then they were going to live on the upper floor.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, Heather, can you just turn off the recording?
Okay.
Thanks.
You know, we're live.
It's great building any by us, you know, okay. That's great.
Right. Okay, counsel, anything further regarding the infrastructure planning, decision-making and accountability delegation before we move on? Nothing from council, that brings us to information items. Uh, five point one, Chief Administrative Officer, Council Update, I C E O, Allen.
Thank you, sir, um, not too much at this time. I, uh, continue to work remotely from Spruce Grove. Um, I, I would and, and thank those members of council and administration that have responded to the survey for the strategic planning session. Please just take a time, it, I, I took me about thirty minutes to give it some thought and go through it. But, uh, please, if you could do that by Friday at four, this is information that will be, uh, utilized by the facilitator to craft the strategic planning session. Uh, I had a, I had a really good question about the anonymity of it. And please understand through the survey monkey, nobody can connect who said what to whom, it's all anonymous. And, uh, that includes the, uh, the, uh, I did check with, uh, Doug, so that includes T S I as well. They won't know who said what, it just comes in through their survey system and it just helps them to, uh, craft and, and be better prepared for, uh, those two days in April. Thank you, sir, that's all I, I have to share at this time.
Counselor Taylor?
Uh, C E O, sir, through the chair, uh, I saw that admin was filling out the strategic planning, uh, form for priorities, I just was curious about that procedure. Like, um, yeah, sorry, like, are the priorities of non-elected people now going to get mixed with the priorities of elected people? Is that what's, uh, I see happening and how appropriate is that, I would ask?
Counselor Taylor, I C E O, Allen.
Thank you, sir, through, uh, counselor, through you to Counselor Taylor, to all of the members of the committee. No, you'll, so you do see, uh, the first question asks if you're a member of administration or if you're a member of council. And so that'll all be driven by the facilitator. The facilitator wants to come and they want to secure the strategic vision of council. Now, they are going to share a bit of what they hear from staff, but no, this is the, and, and less, I mean, just to be very clear, they aren't going to come to those dates in April with a strategic plan, eh, eh, ready to go. They're going to come and they're going to seek what your vision is. Now, they're going to give you some of this background information, which may include some input from administration. But at the end of those two days, uh, it is my intent, and certainly I believe the facilitator and council's intent, that council will have a strategic plan of their vision, their goals and objectives. Thanks, so if I could, this is background information to prepare us, it certainly isn't the, the end product.
Thank you for that, I C E O, Allen. Sorry, you said you had nothing further, uh, I C E O, Allen, for council update?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Counsel, any questions for I C E O, Allen? Okay, nothing that moves us on to recording. Counsel reports, I will start over to my left with Counselor LeBarre.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Counselor LeBarre, Counselor Taylor?
Uh, I went to waste committee media on behalf of the mayor, and, uh, they're working on an agreement with all the members redoing that and an agreement with Yellowhead County, so that's important to know that Yellowhead County now will be managing the, uh, facility instead of, uh, the town head, that's done for a long period of time. And then I went to a forest resource, uh, with, uh, West Fraser, and they told us that with prices are strong, they mentioned a hundred thousand dollars of donation that they've provided to, uh, Pine Valley, uh, they're making big strides in worker safety and walking around the site, designated pathways that are going to be safe. Their challenges are rail strikes, shortage of trucks and drivers, dramatic cost increases in steel, natural gas fuel. They've got six million dollars in road and bridge capital plan, and, um, that's it, thanks, oh, and we also talked about, uh, carable conservation and vet block design. So if you make the harvest block less good for deer and moose and elk, then it's, uh, better for caroo. And we discussed the moment by beetle program, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, Mayor Michaels.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I want to start off by thanking, uh, council administration, everyone attending on Wednesday, the Novus presentation at the Hinton Center, big thank you to, uh, the Chamber of Commerce for helping out, uh, with that and a, a great turnout uh, and great participation by our group, so it was nice to see, uh, everyone there, uh, you know, very exciting news for our community. On Friday, uh, thank you, Counselor Taylor, for attending my place of waste management, I was part of an Evergreens, uh, meeting. Uh, this year's requisition will be going up to six point two five million, uh, instead of, uh, five million. Part of it is to, uh, prepare our, uh, next big build, which will be, uh, in the Wildwood area, uh, forty-five to fifty, uh, unit, um, uh, seniors facility, uh, there, so, um, so that'll go up a bit, and as you know, Hinton pays approximately uh, eleven percent of that fund, so, uh, that would be close to seven hundred thousand dollars from, uh, taxpayers. So, uh, again, up from five million to six point two five for one year, uh, until we secure more funding, uh, from other levels of government for, uh, this project, and that was, uh, it for me, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels, Counselor Taylor, do you have a question?
Yeah, so that's like a five to six percent tax increase forever?
If I may, uh, not forever, it's, uh, just done every year based on what our capital needs for, are for certain, uh, uh, upcoming projects. Now, they were consistently five million, because Parkland, uh, was a, a big development in exit and in Pine Valley Lodge. That's over sixty million dollars of capital. Right now, uh, there's Victor Lake, that's already been, uh, uh, funds have been secured from Victor Lake up in Grand Cash. And the only other project that we have, that we have commitment to, from all the municipal, uh, uh, the six municipal organizations, which we supported a letter, uh, months ago, uh, is, uh, just the, the one in Wildwood. After that, we don't have any capital projects, we're fairly well-built throughout our area, and, uh, then those capital requisitions should change every year.
My concern would be that the, uh, capital requisition for the, um, the Evergreen Society went up, so that we could pay the, uh, uh, facility that we have in our town, which is great. And we're still paying that increase, or did that increase go down, and now it's going up again? Because we, we, we had an increase for a certain purpose, now I see we're getting an increase and talk with a lot of increase.
So if I may, um, I'm, uh, I don't know how to better explain it. We, there are capital projects in total, and the increases are just per year, so next year it could be zero. So on, uh, our taxes, uh, there'll be a requisition of approximately seven hundred thousand from Hinton residents, non-res and resident, split up through our tax sheet, taxation process. Now, that is to build the Wildwood one, the Hinton one, uh, we, we, we are. Now that is to build the Wildwood one, the hint and one, we we are paying approximately five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year for the last, let's say, ten years, but that that building cost us over thirty million dollars. So we only contributed out of those ten years about six million dollars for this thirty three million dollar building, right? So now we're we're paying our fair share towards Wildwood. So those numbers will fluctuate up and down. If there's another project hypothetically, let's say in Obed, we want to build a fifty million dollar building, then our appropriate requisitions will still be divided through Yellowhead County and Greenview, Hinton, and and a decision will come. Now, there's something obviously that doesn't make sense, or it's like, why are we building this? Then I think that's where we as a council have that conversation that, okay, this requisition is not appropriate. But again, I want to focus on the point that we approved a letter of support for these two projects prior. And anytime Evergreens goes down the road to build a big capital project, we go to all the municipalities for councils to pass a resolution to say that we support in principle the development of these buildings and Wildwood was one of them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Another follow up. We don't want to turn this into a big debate and discussion about funding for Evergreens, but.
Well, I don't have to speak at all.
No, go ahead.
Well, I'm just I just don't understand. We got a increase for five million dollars to pay for the hinted facility. And now the next facility, seven million dollars. And then now the increase is five million plus a seven million, which is twelve million rather than two million. Dog, two million increase. So that's the part I don't understand.
May I clarify?
Yes, please. I I I don't know whether the five and two million, we're increasing our requisition from approximately five hundred and fifty thousand for hinting alone for our taxpayers to about seven hundred thousand. So the increase is only a hundred and fifty thousand more from last year, divided through all the taxpayers. So again, the breakdown would be, you know, maybe ten to fifteen dollars for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar dwelling. If you're if if your assessment is two fifty, so it's an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand for us.
I misunderstood. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the clarity and the opportunity, best question so that I could understand what's going on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly welcome.
Sure.
Sorry, Mayor Michael. That was it. Thank you. Counsel race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have one thing to report, and that is the projector down at the guild. So movies are not being shown right now. And big thing tomorrow night, the caro presentation by the elders was happening at, I think, seven thirty. That has been postponed. So and that's all.
Thank you, Counsel Race. Counsel Taylor.
So what's the schedule for repairing the projector?
Oh, they're working on it. They're working on it with Simontonic and Everton. So I don't have a timeline, but they're dedicated to get it repaired.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's affect affecting movies as well.
It is.
We're scheduled to be viewing showings. They're not able to know. Counselor bearish, did you have a question to?
That was the question.
Hey, Counsel Ross.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. I too attended the waste committee meeting and you know, as Counselor Taylor mentioned, a couple of things, I think, when also, you know, Grand Cash did have a couple of representatives there because they will be into the fold in twenty twenty three, I believe. And then we also accepted the Trans Mountain Pipeline is experiencing waste, the waste management. So move to accept that into our landfill as well. So that's going to be coming our direction. And it's just from Trans Mountain Pipeline. It's not from, I believe it's from between Camlur and somewhere else area. So that'll be coming. And as Counselor Taylor mentioned, so they are in yellow county is currently in working on recruitment of a waste manager for that position. So they have, you know, obviously accepted that responsibility and they will be using internal staff at this moment, but are hoping to have a manager in place soon, hopefully. So so that I almost wanted to attended Counsel Reese and I Youth Council. I gotta say, you know what? Youth Council is is, you know, started off great and getting better. We and and thanks to Heather over here as well. She we worked on our bylaws to straighten some of those bylaws up in the last meeting specifically around the volunteering. It was very unclear on how much hours you had to volunteer and how many places. And so had a great conversation with the group about that. Also looked at also their attendance. So they were very adamant about attending. And and if if they don't attend, whether it's unexcused or excused and how many, because, you know, we only have ten meetings a year. So they were quite, I was impressed quite strict on themselves on because it's all about the diversity. So we had a great conversation about that. And yeah, so that sweater's coming and we're really starting trying to look at where, you know, where are our our low level fruits? You know, that we can attain or can can achieve. And the kids have really, the the group has really kiddos have been really interested in trying to get the message out of mental health and awareness. They've had a lot of struggles and, you know, with COVID and everything. And so there's been a lot of conversation around that. So really looking at also building off of what the past councils have done with social media campaigns partnerships in that area. So so, yeah, so we had that conversation. And I think the group too, they they invited and accepted my dog as a so in the group meeting. So he become and joined and visited everybody. So that was nice. And I too want to echo that notice they, you know, was extremely informative. And I got to say, I had an opportunity to speak to some of the 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 individuals, the employees and president. And what a group to have in our community. They are so excited to be here. And they're so excited to, you know, just be part of this community and contribute the way they're going to. So, you know, I'm I'm so happy to have them. And, you know, once the land deal all is ground up and people hear about that and get started on it, it's going to be great for our community. So thanks, Mr. Chair.
You, Counsel Ross, Counsel Race, do you have a question?
I I don't have a question. I do have something else to add. But through council.
Uh, for council reporting or is?
Yes, yes.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, so today I was notified that the town spring cleanup is going to happen June sixth to eleventh. So that means keep it to the curb. It's June fourth. So spring cleanup six, six to eleven.
Thank you, Counsel Race. Counsel, we go.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly to build on some of the novice earth information from the presentation we attended last week, some numbers for people who maybe weren't able to attend that are pertinent. If everything goes to plan right now, the facility itself should take approximately four hundred thousand square feet. They're looking to produce approximately six million kilograms of produce per per year with fresh deliveries to local grocery stores every two days. Five hundred thousand kilograms of seafood capitalizing on residual heat energy and ultimately a hundred and twenty full-time jobs. So all, you know, again, if everything goes to plan, some really beneficial benefits to the to the town. And then for council and the community, I have an R C M P committee meeting tomorrow after after my regular job. So that's it for me.
Counsel, we go. As for myself, I attended the notice earth presentation as well, along with the council. And yeah, it's incredibly exciting opportunity for the town of Hinton. Look forward to seeing that move forward. I also wanted to throw an acknowledgement out there of how impressed I was at the turnout of citizens who came to the meeting. So I only attended one, but it was pretty much full. And in discussing with people that have been there throughout the day, pretty much all of them were full all day. And I believe they did four presentations through the through the day. So I think that's great. Shows the engagement of citizens and how excited they are about this this project too. Outside of that, the Community Futures meeting last week, Thursday, I believe. And the takeaway from that meeting that would be interesting to anybody who might be watching or listening is that Community Futures in partnership with the government of Alberta Business Link and Digital Main Street is offering a digital economy program. Digital economy program is a pre-service designed to help your small business expand online, be able to start doing e-commerce transactions as well as some website development and other other stuff to help enhance your digital presence. So to be eligible. Sorry. To be eligible, all you have to be is that you have to not be a nonprofit, a charitable trust or franchise business and have between zero and forty nine employees in your organization. So that if you fit that criteria, and that sounds something interesting, just get a hold of Community Futures and they'll be able to guide you into getting that help. Outside of that, the only other thing I wanted to hit on, which I shouldn't have hit on last meeting, but it slipped my mind was the Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee is looking for a few members. There is a indigenous people's representative, a natural resource representative member and a youth member. So if you want to look up the criteria to see if you fall into one of those categories and you're interested, just go on the town hint website and search up the Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee. All the informations there, including how to apply, and hopefully we can fill up those three vacant positions to have a full board. That's all I have. That brings us then to Chief Administrative Officer reporting. Status report, council action pending list and council action complete list. Turn that over to I C O Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I'm actually, I just, I did not think it would work so well virtually. So Laura is going to take us through that.
Mr. Chair, through to committee. So yeah, pages twenty two, thirty three of your package. The last few pages are your basically completed list that's been updated since the last time we reviewed it on February twenty fifth. Do you have any questions about the completed items? And the first few pages are the outstanding items. They've been updated to the versatility of administration on the added additional comment section for status. And you can refer to the revised dates. You anticipate when you might see that action completed. I believe Mr. Russo and I C O Hamlin and myself are the three that are in the meeting today that can answer any questions you have about particular items. Necessarily go item by item, but if you just want to page by page, it's up to you or just jump all over. Pretty easy to keep up.
Yep. I think we'll just open the floor. If you have any questions about anything on the action ending, action complete list, counsel. Counselor LeBarre.
Well, it seems to me that the first, I don't know, three or four pages of this report, everything in there is done. Like, these are all, what is the process? Like, when when does it move from pending or in progress to being labeled as done? I mean, all these items are essentially out of budget. They should be all labeled as complete, no?
Thank you for that, Counselor LeBarre. That's a few questions I want to have myself. And?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. So typically what happens is as soon as the item is complete, the person responsible for it goes into the system, marks it complete, updates the status on how it was completed. If it's supposed to come to the meeting, this meeting, for example, and it would stay current in case it doesn't get completed or gets pulled off the agenda or there's some other action to it. So if there isn't something that's marked complete, it's either staffing capacity indication and perhaps I C O Hamlin might be able to speak to that a little bit more, you know. He's kind of managing a couple different areas out of corporate services right now as well that might have impacted our ability to mark those complete.
Yeah, I think before I turn it over to I C O Hamlin, it was specific to the budget items that are still marked as in progress now that the budget's passed. I think Counselor LeBarre's question was, why are those still marked in progress once now that the budget's passed?
So I C O Hamlin or?
Thank you, sir, through you to all of council or all of the committee, excuse me. So this is still the direction of council is clear on these, and we're still working with our contractors. So Rob's still working on completing this for us and getting it back to our corporate services area to input into our finance program. That's one end of it. The other end of it is is you'll see that it's the action, the council action pending as of February twenty second. So it does tend to lag behind a bit. And so I do expect to see and and Counsel LeBarre is quite correct. I I expect to see the first two or three pages pretty much be moved to the completed list by the time you see this a month from now.
And then Counselor Bear.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm going to go to Counsel Ross.
Yeah, I see. It's already been answered because there was a few others that I saw there that has been due, but being as how it is February twenty second, so my assumption will see you next one.
Counsel, anything further regarding action pending or action complete?
One page, seven of eight of that report. So item eighteen eighty four. And it's marked as on hold, but it's going out for RFPs to the A T E program. So I would have expected that that shouldn't be there. Looking for a comment because we're not looking for an A T E operator, right?
Sorry, if I, Counselor LeBarre, I'm just getting caught up here. And that was which motion?
Eighteen eighty four.
Eighteen eighty four, okay.
So while you look through it, I C O Hamlin, I should speak to it quickly. My recollection is that that has to be put on hold because the province has directed that no changes to the current, any community's current A T E program can be made until their review is complete. And I think that's why the December first twenty twenty two date is in there. That was their estimated date of having your A T E program review complete and be able to pass information on to the municipalities. I C O Hamlin.
Mr. Chair, that is correct. So that previous motion of council is on hold and it is until the province completes their review. And I was just checking. Oh, sorry, Mac is with us. Mac is is that review December first of this year or December thirty first of this year?
Thanks for that question. That that review is due to be completed by December first.
Okay.
Twenty twenty two.
Okay. Good, Counsel. Sorry, Counsel Taylor, did you? No. Counsel. Sorry, committee. Okay, there's nothing further from the committee. We will move on to discussion items. Seven point one, possible rescheduling of April fifth, twenty twenty two regular council meeting. Turning this over to you, I C O Hamlin.
Thank you, sir, through you to the members of the committee. And I do apologize if I misstepped. When we were looking to publish the agenda, I added this thinking it needed to come forward. And this may have been dealt with council already. In regards to the question, let me administration brings this forward in in the possible rescheduling. So April fifth is the day before the Economic Development Association Conference in Canadaskus, which it does involve a couple of members of council. And so I had recalled there was some discussion about the possibility of rescheduling this. That may no longer be the case, in which case I do apologize to to the committee and it's not necessary. If there is an appetite to reschedule to allow attendance of those attending as well, the E D A conference, administration be looking for direction on this.
Thank you, I C O Hamlin. I did recall that it came up prior, and I think there was an understanding that there was more people from council attending than actually are. I think there's only going to be two people from council who wouldn't be present on the April fifth meeting. I C O Hamlin, is there anybody from administration that's going to be attending the E D A who should possibly be at a council meeting on the fifth?
Um, I'm not in, I don't believe so administratively, other than there is a possibility I could attend, in which case that would be more difficult for me, but that isn't necessary that I attend. And that would be a discussion I'd want to have further with Mayor Michaels. In terms of some administration representation for the town of Hinton, I would In terms of some administration representation for the Towne Hinton, I would like to have an individual there with, with our council representation.
Thank you, ICA O'Hamlin. At this time, there isn't any requirement for a motion or direction or anything to reschedule that meeting. But we can certainly have a discussion, Counsel Taylor.
I'll be out of town for two weeks during that period and I'll try to participate by Zoom, if Zoom works where I'm at. Just so you know, I might not be there, but I'll try.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's for the April fifth and April twelfth. So I don't know if that's, that might potentially be three.
Well, as far as we know, we still have more. But if it winds up, then we don't, meeting can always speak counsel because we don't, can't actually call. But yeah, anyway, Counsel Wigan.
Yeah, you know, I'm thinking about how we treated AUMA and also with the addition of the information presented by Counselor Taylor and also by the ICAO, wishing to have some administrative personnel there. I honestly, I think maybe rescheduling it to the fourth, the Monday. If that were to work for council and administration as whole, that might be something to consider.
Counsel Wigan, Counsel LeBerge.
I forget exactly what we were working on last meeting, but there was something that was time sensitive, critical, that's coming to this April fifth meeting. Postponing that meeting or canceling that meeting is going to be an issue. Do you remember what it was that there was something that we need to, it was the Bhutan lands so that we could actually have that decision come back for the fifth April? It's, that's a really important meeting. And if we can't, if it isn't for certain, we can do it on Tuesday, we should do it.
Thank you, Counsel Wigan. Debbie, I'll go to you and then Counselor Ross.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind committee that on the fifth of April, we have scheduled the public hearing for both the lease guarantee bylaw for the golf carts as well as the debenture bylaw for the Bhutan lands. I don't know if it matters if we move it up a day, but the public hearing has been scheduled for the fifth of April. Thank you.
That's a good point because that had to be advertised, correct? Okay, Counselor Ross and then Counselor.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I, I just was going to bring that up because I was just looking at they, they're already been advertised for the two weeks. So I mean, if we're looking at changing it, we'd have to do another two weeks of advertising. So I, I assume, that's my assumption anyway. So, but thank you.
For that, Counsel Ross. ICA O'Hamlin, I see you and Ms. Weber both there. I want to speak. Who do you first?
If I could, sir, with, with that information, and I appreciate Ms. Weber confirming, we do not have time to reschedule and re-advertise those hearings. So we will have to maintain the April fifth meeting date. My thanks for Counsel LeBerge for confirming that.
Thank you. Ms. Weber, did you want to add something?
Thank you for that, ICA O'Hamlin. I would want to double check with our legal if Ms. Thompson is on. But I think that we would be okay because we have already advertised for two consecutive weeks. And that is the, what the MGA requires is that we've got that advertisement done. But there is that sensitivity there. So I don't want to see us delay it either because it delays some other things in terms of the golf carts. I know that the golfing society is anxious to execute the actual agreement to put in place for the golf cart. So I'd like to not delay that if possible.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, did you want to speak to that?
Ms. Weber is correct in that. And just also to note, this is actually a non-stop public hearing. So you still do have to advertise, but it is a non-statutory because it is not related to land use or area development plans or subdivisions, et cetera. So, but of course, you know, Ms. Weber has said it would be good to get moving on this. The delays would not help the golf course and their endeavors.
But just before I go to Mayor Michaels, I just have a clarifying question. Is, is it a public hearing or, or is it just written submissions?
It is a public hearing. It's non-stop, a non-statutory public hearing. It can be run exactly the same as a normal public hearing, whereas residents can submit their letters and residents can speak in favor or in opposition. It is, it is the same thing. But the thing is that you didn't have to move forward with this. But because this is kind of a sensitive thing, I think administration chose to move forward with having a public hearing.
I appreciate that clarification, Ms. Weber.
Yes, we've received no public comment to date. I am the contact for those bylaws. Should there be public that want to put in writing any kind of concerns or questions? I've received nothing to date and those advertisements are already out. Secondly, too, I would want to check with Ms. Bowden on the timeframe for the application for the debenture bylaw. I know that we have some time sensitivities on that as well, if it does not receive second and third reading for April fifth. So I just want to double check what our application dates are for that.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good conversation. I think there's a lot of things that came to light. If it, if we move forward with not changing anything, I, I'll commit to, to go on virtually for quorum. If, you know, if something happens, it seems like we'll have four for sure. And I'll, I'll travel early that day anyway, and I'll be able to join virtually if, if there's something else. So it sounds like we're going to probably keep it the same date, not to mess up everything. And just to give council assurance that I'll also be able to join if we're short one council. I'll just, I'll just be online. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Counsel. I, I would endorse what Mayor Michael said. The, the counselors who aren't able to attend in person, if there's any way that you can attend virtually, I would encourage that. It's a pretty important discussion, some pretty important decisions to be made that day. So if at all possible, it would be great to, to have you join us virtually. Counsel, is there anything further? Hey, seeing nothing further, that brings us to a closed session, which you have to close. You have to close session items this evening. So Counsel Michaels, I'll move to go in closed session. Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Motion, movement, closed session. Yep, committee, all those in favor? It's carried, we will move into closed session.
Laura, did you contact ICA O'Hamlin to join that meeting?
I did not. Did you?
No, I don't think we need to, any, no.
I will call the committee, the whole meeting back to the board, committee. Actions, motions.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. I would like to direct the mayor to call a special meeting CAO Recruitment Committee on March twenty-ninth, although we wanted to do it on April twenty-ninth, but we have to do it on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, please.
Do you, Counsel LeBerge?
Do you want to have a time?
Or let's drop whatever. No, let's call it on the twenty-ninth at a time that's, that works for council. Oh, get out of time. Is everybody available at six?
We generally just do it.
Our four. Whatever. Okay, twenty-ninth at four P M., please.
Thank you, Counsel LeBerge. Anything further before we call, question? Counsel LeBerge has requested that committee move to direct the mayor to call a special meeting for the CAO Recruitment Committee on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two at four P M. Seeing none, all those in favor? Counsel, Mayor Michaels.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor?